Good evening, and welcome to the February 3 meeting of Glendale City Council. May we have the roll call, please?
Councilmembers Devine.
Here.
Friedman.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Mayor Sonanian.
Here.
Day's flag salute will be led by Councilmember Laura Fiedman.
Please rise and join me in renewing our pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation, which will be delivered by Reverend Matt Andrews of the First Baptist Church of Glendale.
Let us pray. Our God, our hearts are heavy with the hearts of those in our community. We do not approach the public spectrum without recognizing that we represent many. So God, tonight I pray that tonight's proceedings would be filled with people standing courageously for what they believe in, but also sitting humbly and listening to others. Please bless tonight. It's in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you Reverend Andrews. May we have the report, please?
Agenda for the February 3, 2015 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council is posted on Friday, January 30, 2015, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. What's next?
Under presentation and appointments, at 3A is agenda preview for the meetings of Tuesday, February 10, 2015.
Ms. Veers?
Mayor Sonanian, members of the City Council. For the Glendale Housing Authority for February 10th, we have known business agenda items. That afternoon, we do have a joint meeting of the City Council and the Housing Authority, Director of Community Development and Community Services and Parks. This is regarding proposed grant application for the housing-related parks program. That afternoon, again, we have a Glendale Economic Development Corporation meeting along with a Glendale City Council meeting. One item, Director of Economic Development. This is an update on the Class A office attraction and tech company cluster attraction initiative. That afternoon, we do have a Glendale City Council and a successor agency meeting. Director of Public Works and Library Arts and Culture. This was continued from a couple of dates, one of which was today. Central library renovation project, and this is in connection with spec number 3551R. That afternoon, we have another special meeting of the successor agency, Director of Economic Development. This is approval of recognized obligation payment schedule, the ROPS, for 1516 for July to December of 2015. That evening, to commence at 6:00 PM for the Glendale City Council meeting, we have a number of consent items. Director of Finance, this is an authorization for destruction of certain city records. Director of Public Works, lighting improvements at parking garages. General Manager of Glendale Water and Power, maintain the status quo operation of the Glendale operable unit. Director of Public Works and Community Services and Parks, this is regarding the HVAC replacement at Civic Auditorium, Fire Station 21, and Howard Sub and Radio Shops. General Manager of Glendale Water and Power, this is regarding the full-scale AMI-based conservation voltage reduction program. We have a few more under consent. General Manager of Glendale Water and Power, additional IT support for the Glendale Fire Information Services and GWP departments. General Manager of Glendale Water and Power, this is repair of two power transformers at the Ross Moyn Substation. Fire Chief, this is regarding WITA payment program for 2015. And lastly, under consent, as Director of Community Development, solicitation for the operation of Glendale Beeline Fixed Route Transit Service. We have a few items under action that evening. Director of Finance, we will be discussing our mid-year budget report. The City Manager, we're going to be giving an update on pension. Director of Community Development, this is regarding code compliance policy for unpermitted window installations. We have a few items under hearings. Director of Community Development, this is determine if any nonprofit agencies are available to provide public pair transit services as required by the Federal Transit Administration section. This is a grant and application process. And lastly, Director of Community Development, this is the Residential Window Replacement Design Review Board process. And that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Veers. Next item, please.
Next item is introduction of Paul Craig, new CEO of USC Verduko Hills Hospital.
Hi, Mayor Sonanian, City Council staff. It's my great honor to introduce to you the new CEO of the Verduko Hills Hospital. The one word that comes to my mind in my association with him is that he's a visionary. I think you'll be interested in hearing what he has to say tonight, and encourage each one of you to schedule a meeting with him and see what the strategic plan and the future of the hospital is and how it's going to engage with our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Townsend?
And thank you for that gracious introduction. My name is Paul Craig. I'm the Chief Administrative Officer for the KECC Health System and the interim CEO for USC Verduko Hills Hospital. And if you'll permit me, I have about three paragraphs of prepared remarks. As you know, for the past 40 years, Verduko Hills Hospital has been a vital healthcare partner to the foothills communities. It's part of the mission of USC Verduko Hills Hospital to refocus and re-engage in community relation building moving forward. So please be assured that you'll see USC Verduko Hills Hospital more actively engaged in the community in 2015. We're continuously exploring opportunities to support and partner with community organizations such as Glendale Healthy Kids, Sir Optimist International of Glendale, Glendale Community College, Glendale Unified School District, and the City of Glendale. Additionally, I have been privileged to serve on the Glendale Community College Foundation Board as well as being newly appointed to the Glendale Fire Foundation Board. We look forward to our collaborations with these key entities and to the city and with the City of Glendale. Future plans. As many of you know, USC Verduko Hills Hospital joined KECC Medicine of USC in July of 2013. KECC Medicine of USC is the University of Southern California's medical enterprise, one of only two university-based medical systems in the LA area. KECC Medicine of USC includes KECC Hospital of USC, USC Norris Comprehensive Cancer Center, and USC Verduko Hills Hospital, as well as more than 40 outpatient facilities across Southern California. If you've visited, if you've recently visited USC Verduko Hills Hospital, then you've seen the amazing transformation that has already begun to take place in our main lobby and on the third floor and the mitting areas. Other renovations will soon be underway, including expansion of our emergency department and the addition of a cardiac catheterization lab to assist in diagnosing heart attacks. We're very excited about the future of USC Verduko Hills Hospital and as we grow and expand our services and programs. We look forward to serving the foothills community for many more decades to come with the same high-quality compassionate care our community has come to know and trust with the added advantage of being now a part of a network with an academic health system to provide even more expanded care. So those are my prepared remarks, and I thank you very much.
Thank you. Welcome to Glendale. We're happy to have you at Verduko Hills USC Hospital. We're looking forward for much closer cooperation between the hospital and all the wonderful organizations that are present in the City of Glendale as well as the City of Glendale itself. There's no shortage of Trojans or USC graduates on this dais, so you'll feel at home. I assure you of that. Yes?
I'd just like to welcome you, Mr. Craig, to our community. And on behalf of Sir Optimus, I have to put on another hat. Just thank you for your generosity and your first big donation to our community, and I thank you very much. Welcome.
Yes.
I'm beginning to think, Paul, that you like bow ties. Now, the last time I saw you, you were in a USC bow tie that you had been given just before our event that I was at. And just so you know, USC, USC, USC. Didn't you graduate?
Scott Howard.
USC, USC, USC. So we're covered on the.
I feel at home, and.
I gotta talk to him. What school are you? Don't tell me UCLA.
I actually warned him about that. I said, "You're coming to a USC crowd." So, yeah.
I won't bash the University of California. I worked at UC San Diego for nine years with my current boss, who's the CEO of the USC KECC Medicine Program. But when Max Nikias made his big speech on the health system and its intent to triple in size in the next decade and included, called out Verduko Hills Hospital as part of the expansion with the goal of being the most elite and the biggest academic health system in Southern California, I think most people translate that into beat the Bruin. I will only just say, only 20 more seconds of your time just on the subject of bow ties. I only own one long tie, which I wear to funerals. Otherwise, it's always bow ties.
Hey, Paul.
Welcome. I look forward to sitting down with you, so let's make that happen.
Of course. We'll do it gladly.
See you soon. Now we've got three great hospitals in Glendale.
Indeed. Okay, next item?
Next item is items including minutes. The following are routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such request before a motion is proposed.
May we have the roll call, please?
Councilmembers Devine.
Yes.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Sonanian.
Yes. Next item?
Next item is City Council and Staff Comments.
Yes. Ms. Friedman?
A few things. Last week, I think maybe all of us attended the kickoff for the Special Olympics. You may have seen in the Glendale news press, but Glendale is very proud to be a sponsor of that wonderful event. It was great to have the athletes, some of the athletes there, people who have competed in the past, as well as some parents, and a lot of extremely enthusiastic folks from the Glendale community. Glendale Aventis, who was supposed to sponsor the event to the amount of...
How much?
It was supposed to be $10,000. Surprised everyone by crossing the $10,000 off their check and making it 15,000?
15,000.
15,000. So they upped their contribution, and thank you so much, Glendale Aventis. They recognize the value that this event has to the people who participate as well as to the City of Glendale. Secondly, several of us also attended the annual winter conference for the Independent Cities Association. This is a one-day conference for the cities in Los Angeles, and people ask, "What's an independent city?" The way we define it as an independent city is a city that has their own public safety, either police or fire. So the thing that keeps these cities that we have in common is having public safety, which makes us a little bit different from cities that contract that out. So it's a way that we, as council members, can learn about public safety, about what departments are doing all across the state, the latest innovations and that kind of thing. It was a wonderful event, and I learned a lot about drones, which I didn't know, and surveillance cameras, and the latest and greatest in fire safety and law enforcement. And I knew our chief was there. He was participating, and we had police chiefs and fire chiefs from all across the region and the state, actually. So it was a great conference, and I hope my colleagues enjoyed it.
We certainly did. Thank you. Yes. Ms. Devine?
Well, while they were in Santa Barbara enjoying the conference, I was privileged to kind of sit in for all of them or represent all of the council at the Essencia Gala, which was held at Union Station. And that was an event that was inspirational. It was heartbreaking, and yet it ended up being hopeful. It was a wonderful event, 450 people, all there for one cause, and that was to lift people out of homelessness. And I have to tell you, if ever you get a chance, you should visit the facility, donate your time or your money to the facility. Essencia is a great, great program for the homeless. So it was my privilege to represent all of you.
Thank you. Thank you for representing us. Mr. Najarian?
Just briefly, on Thursday of last week, I attended the Los Angeles Area Chamber of Commerce Gala, and it was pretty nice as far as galas go, but one very interesting item was I had run into about five or six state legislators, assemblymen, assembly persons and state senators. And without fail, each and every one of them, when they heard I was from Glendale, said, "Oh, you guys are the ones suing the state for your redevelopment money." So that action that we took really is resounding throughout the state, and I know that some folks up there are actually pulling for us to win that. So it's a very interesting comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Najarian. And yesterday, I attended, along with Councilmember Najarian, the LA County Mayor's meeting, which is an event that takes place on a quarterly basis. And Mr. Najarian was there in his capacity as an MTA member, as were three of our county supervisors. And I have to thank Mayor Garcetti for coming up with this initiative in order to foster closer cooperation between the various 80-some municipalities that make up LA County, because a lot of the issues that we have, we share in common, and cooperation is likely to lead to better results for all of us. And the subject matters, the speakers spoke regarding the issues of housing, regarding the Los Angeles Air Force Base, which probably a lot of you haven't even heard about. But yes, there is an Air Force Base in Los Angeles, which is a huge operation that results in billions, multiples of billions of dollars for the LA economy and is under threat of being removed, along with the Science Center, the institute that supports the airbase to another state. And I will be asking soon the support from my council members to sign on to a letter to the federal authorities not to touch the base and leave it in LA County, because we all enjoy the benefits, the economic benefits that stem from the base. Also, the issues of immigration were discussed. The issue of earthquake preparedness was discussed. I've brought a copy of the City of Los Angeles's full earthquake preparedness report, and it's very relevant to the City of Glendale as it is to any other city in the Southern California area, because we are due for a major earthquake. And major earthquake is defined as the San Francisco earthquake of 1906, I believe, and not the 1994 Northridge earthquake. That, unfortunately, Northridge earthquake will look like a minor tremor compared to what's coming, what we're due to be confronting in the near future. And it's very important that we jointly learn the lessons and take remedial measures to the extent possible. Also, I'd like to announce that on February 24th, the City of Glendale will be holding its first work boots Tuesday. And this is an initiative on behalf of myself and my fellow council members to get out in the field and really see how the city works in terms of our facilities, our employees, and not incidentally, our first choice was the Grayson Power Plant. And this will take place on February 24th at 3:00 PM. It will be a public city council meeting, therefore open to the public, and we encourage anyone who'd like to join us to do so, because I believe we all have some things to learn about the viability of the plant, our future plans for the plant, and just really getting to know how it works and the people who make it work for us. Once again, February 24th, 3:00 PM, Grayson Power Plant, which is located 800 Airway, City of Glendale. And that's all the comments that I have. Thank you. What's next, Mr. Clerk?
Item number six is community event announcements. This is a three-minute community event announcement.
Yes, thank you. And the first speaker we have is Todd Leonard, followed by Seba Karapetian.
Yes, please. Mayor Sonanian, members of the City Council, staff and our neighbors in Glendale. My name is Reverend Todd Leonard. I'm the founder of the Glendale Communitas Initiative, which I'd like to introduce to you this evening. Around our city, congregations have heard a call, a call to embrace humility and a call to end our isolation. Too often, churches, synagogues, mosques and other faith groups have been too consumed with our own programs and endeavors and building up our own brands that we haven't prioritized relating to learning from and serving with one another. And too often, we've been unaware of and disconnected from the good people and wonderful organizations doing the work of compassion in our neighborhoods. In response to this call, the Glendale Communitas Initiative has been created. Fifteen congregations so far, composed of 12 denominations, have stepped out of their isolation to form a religiously and politically neutral religious advisory board. We have also established a professional advisory board of 19 business, nonprofit and civic leaders. With the guidance of these two boards, Communitas is building a collaborative network of vital services between the vital sectors of our city. By living our mission of doing good together, Communitas will help hundreds of Glendale families over the next five years find their way up and out of poverty. Focusing on community-centric programs and leveraging the community's resources as best we can for each person, Communitas will connect people with essential local services such as medical and mental health care, legal aid, and jobs training. We will augment these local services by providing classes in adult and physical literacy, English as a second language, parenting skills, and youth leadership. Our primary service, the Communitas Economic Stability Program, is one solution for our neighbors in crisis. This program is for motivated families or individuals hovering near the poverty line, looking and working for a way up and out of poverty. Our case management staff will evaluate all program applicants and select those who are the best fit. Those applicants determined to be the best fit for the program are provided with a case manager who will help them determine immediate needs and long-term goals. And an individually tailored program will be put in place to help them accomplish their goals with the support of mentorship and community resources. As a complement to the stability program, Communitas is also able to offer scholarships to those who wish to attend Glendale Community College. We are able to provide scholarship recipients their first year at Glendale Community College fully paid with tuition fees and books. A second year's tuition is available to those students who volunteer a cumulative total of 60 hours to any of Glendale's nonprofit organizations during their first 12 months of school. To learn more about this initiative and to join us in strengthening our community, we invite the members of this council and all those listening to contact our executive director, Jason Schlotter. His email address is communitasjs@gmail.com, and his phone number is 818-477-0792. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend Leonard. Seba Karapetian, followed by Roberta Medford.
Good evening, Mayor Sonanian, members of City Council, City staff. My name is Seba Karapetian, Community Services Supervisor for the Community Services and Parks Department. I'm here to highlight one of our programs taking place at Pacific Community Center next Friday evening, February 13, from 6:00 PM to midnight. The event is called Parents' Night Out, and it is an opportunity for parents who have children between the ages of five and 12 years old to drop off their child at the community center and enjoy an evening out in Glendale. We will provide the babysitting for the evening using our experienced day camp staff to conduct the evening's activities, which include various games in the basketball gym, an arts and crafts project, movies, and popcorn. We'll also be serving dinner. The cost per child is $15. The drop-off time is 6:00 PM, and kids must be picked up by midnight. For more information and registration, people can contact us at the community center by calling 818-548-4098 or visiting our website, www.glandalc.gov/tsp. Thank you.
Shouldn't that be a year and a half enough? What a great program.
Yeah, that's a delight.
We're trying to have it quarterly and increase the frequency as it gains popularity.
Wow, yeah. I hope people pay attention. $15 and how many hours? Six, seven?
Six hours. $2.
Six hours.
$2.50 an hour.
Reconsider the age floor.
It's a, this is date night. This is a date night. I think that's a delightful idea.
February 13.
Will you be able to put some of these kids to sleep?
Hopefully.
Because 12:00 AM is very late for a five-year-old.
It's a pretty spacious gym, so if it's not the activities or the movie, maybe more time in the gym will help us out, so.
All right. Whose idea was, this is a great idea?
We used to have it at Spar Heights Community Center. It kind of went away. We brought it back and partnered up with the Montreal Shopping Park. There was demand from the community, and we said, "Why don't we offer it at our other community centers as well?" So we figured Pacific Community Center with its popularity and the day camps selling out every summer, so it was a good place to start.
Great.
Wow. Fantastic.
Thank you. Thank you, Seba. And Roberta Medford?
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
Viewers. I am Roberta Medford, and I'm here tonight representing the organization Glendale Beautiful to announce our 60th Annual Arbor Day Celebration, which will be held on March 3rd at the Casa Dobe de San Rafael in conjunction with the city's Department of Community Services and Parks. The important date that I'm announcing tonight, though, is February 24th, and that is the deadline for submitting your tree donation form. And I've passed them out to you, and they're also in the back. We do welcome donations of trees to be planted in Glendale city parks, the libraries and the school areas. A donated tree at a cost of $45 each is a great way to honor or remember your loved ones, organizations, or causes dear to your heart. And next winter, when your tree is planted in early January, you will be invited to a photo op. Have your picture taken with it. It is completely cool and a wonderful, fun thing to do. And then you can keep tabs on your tree or trees as they grow. At the website, glendaleca.gov, under Events, you'll find all this listed on the March 3rd listing. But remember, the trees are, tree donation forms are due by February 24th, and you'll find the printed form there to download and print off the website also. Or questions? No Trojan here. Email me at rmedford@ucla.edu. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Medford. And that's the last speaking card that we have. What's next, Mr. Clerk?
Under action items, at 8A is Director of Public Works and Community Services and Parks regarding Stengel Ball Field Clubhouse and Bleacher Demolition and Brand Park Restroom Demolition and Grading Project in connection with specification number 3546. One is a motion awarding contract to Triangle Enterprises, Inc. in an amount up to $443,925 and rejecting all other negotiated bids. Two is a resolution appropriating $68,925 to fund the project. Three is a resolution appropriating $54,800 to fund the project.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Ochoa?
Yes, sir. You recall last fall that in recognition of our trying to work a little bit smarter and not harder, when we looked at assets like Stengel Field where we have our institutional partners, the school district and community college district, as the primary users of that field, maybe it made sense to divest ourselves through an MOU to those partners. And so in September, you approved an MOU Memorandum of Understanding with GUSD, because the field serves as CBI's home field. It also serves as GCC's home field. That gave way to the subsequent discussion on what to do with the actual dugout and clubhouse structure, which is today red-tagged and has been. It needs to be demolished and hopefully rebuilt in its former splendor. Working with our partners at GUSD and with their nonprofit auxiliary, I guess would be the best term for it, we are hopeful that if we can demolish the, and deliver a ready-to-build site to the GUSD, they can raise the funds both internally and through the community and maybe even through partnership with Major League Baseball, because we have a number of professional, former professional athletes and even current professional ball players who have gone through that field at some point in their career, both in the big leagues as well as in the minor leagues. That led us to a point in October where we solicited bids for the demolition of this structure. And at this point, I will turn over to our Public Works Director, Mr. Galanian, to walk you through the action that was taken then and where we are today in the action we're asking you to take tonight.
Rubick?
Thank you, Mr. Ochoa. Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, as Mr. Ochoa mentioned, last October, we received five bids for this project, and upon review of the bids, we found that all of them, all of the bidders, did not meet one of the mandatory minimum experience qualifications, which at the time was at least five comparable demolition projects in the last three years. And hence, we rejected all of them. City Council then dispensed with competitive bidding and authorized us to negotiate a contract with the three lowest bidders. We have now completed two rounds of negotiations and recommend awarding the contract to Triangle Enterprises. The final negotiated amount of $443,925 is within the engineer's estimate of $420,000 to $460,000. Our recommendation is based on a combination of factors, including reasonable price... Our recommendation is based on a combination of factors, including reasonable price, past experience, and quality of work. Triangle Enterprises has performed the demolition work at the ARC, the Brand Library, and the Alex Theater Expansion Projects, and we have been very satisfied with their performance. They completed the work on time, within budget, and without unnecessary change orders. The major part of the project will start on June first to accommodate the high school's baseball season, but the contractor will perform some minor work to mitigate the recent water intrusion damage within the clubhouse structure. And the entire work should be completed before September. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Oh, thank you. Questions?
Like a motion?
Okay. We have a motion.
I'll move, move eight A one.
Ready to vote, or? Okay.
Move eight A one, two, and three.
We have no cards on this side. Okay, we have a motion and a second. May we have the roll call, please?
And the second was Councilmember Friedman? But Najarian, thank you. Councilmembers Devine?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Sinanian?
Let's get Casey Stengel Field rebuilt.
Indeed. Next item, please.
At eight B is Director of Community Development regarding incentives in a downtown specific plan, DSP. The one is a motion initiating amendments to DSP related to the incentives for height, density bonuses, and other miscellaneous updated, update amendments.
Yes, Mr. Ochoa?
Yes, sir. In recognition of the degree of development that had taken place in the downtown specific plan area over the last economic cycle, council in a study session last fall and October directed that we revisit the series of incentives that are contained within the DSP so as to further decelerate any ongoing development, or at least bring that back for your consideration, in an effort to manage the pace that had been underway up to that point. Taking that direction, we have for you now the initiation of an ordinance that hopefully, we believe, reflects the direction that was given to us last fall. And here to give you the presentation and overview is our Principal Urban Designer, Mr. Alan Loomis. Alan?
Mr. Loomis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Ochoa, good evening, councilmembers. The presentation is relatively short just to help focus the conversation on the amendments that are outlined, proposed amendments that are outlined in your staff report. But to recap, on October twenty-first, we had an extensive conversation with council regarding the downtown specific plan. The direction that came out of that study session, as Mr. Ochoa just stated, was to focus proposed amendments to the downtown specific plan on the height and density incentives for bonuses. And specifically, four of them were called out as being of interest. So tonight, the action that's being asked is that you initiate those amendments so that we can take a strike-through version of the DSP to the Planning Commission for their review and recommendation. To recap, the downtown specific plan has a number of height and density restrictions that vary by different districts, so we can see them outlined here. Depending on where you are in the downtown, the maximum height might be twenty-four stories if you're adjacent to the high rises and the freeway, or five stories if you're in the neighborhoods directly across the street on Broadway, and other heights in between. Those can be combined or maximized utilizing a number of incentives that are outlined in the DSP that provide additional height and density. They vary depending on which incentive that are being used. But to kind of illustrate what's been used thus far in the projects that have been proposed in downtown, the most popular incentive has been the public open space incentive. And as we mentioned in the staff report, this has been the subject of a great deal of conversation by the council in terms of the benefit accrued to developer versus the public benefit or perceived public benefit. There's been two projects that have utilized the green building or sustainable design incentive, two hotels that have utilized the hotel incentive, one project utilizing the affordable housing bonus provided for in the downtown specific plan, which is actually different than the affordable housing bonus mandated to us by the state through SB eighteen eighteen. Then two projects that have utilized that bonus and in fact have combined SB eighteen eighteen bonus with other bonuses in the DSP, which has been an issue for council and also frankly for some of the staff. And then five of the down, recent downtown projects have not utilized any incentives at all. So this is the full list of height and density bonuses or incentives currently outlined in the downtown specific plan. And this would be the proposed round of changes. So on the affordable housing bonus, we'd like to clarify the relationship between the affordable housing bonus and the DSP versus the SB eighteen eighteen bonus. SB eighteen eighteen was really just brand new when the downtown specific plan was adopted, so their relationship is not clarified. We've had some practice in case law and that would allow us to clarify that. And we'd like to specifically say, if a developer chooses to use SB eighteen eighteen, there are no other incentives available to them. That's, that's it. They can't double-dip, if you will. On the art galleries or museums, this one has not been used or by any developer yet, but one of their strategic planning discussions a year ago, the Arts Commission expressed some interest in trying to make that a little bit more enticing. So we're recommending a modest increase to that incentive. Right now, if a developer provides an art gallery, they basically get that square footage for free. It doesn't count towards their density. We'd like to say, or we're proposing that they'd be allowed to sort of add, double that, so they could not only get the space for free, but say if they did a three thousand square foot gallery, they could get an additional three thousand square feet of a floor area. Under hotels, historic preservations, and adaptive reuse, we're not proposing any changes to the current incentive system. But on public open space, we're proposing a pretty significant range of modifications on that that would both probably tighten up the kind of formula for how much open space equals how much additional square footage, requiring that that open space be open to the sky, that it includes some sort of signature design element like public artwork or fountain or major signature tree. These are design standards that are not in place right now, ensuring that it is actually down at the sidewalk level. It's not a series of steps up from the street, a number of different design proposals. And also, one thing we think is rather interesting, coming from San Francisco's program, they require that development that builds public open space for a density bonus has to provide a sign that says this is public open space, is provided by the developer, so that John Q citizen walking down the sidewalk knows that they can go into that space, that it's for public benefit. Signature design is really a kind of a very qualitative, based largely on the idea that if somewhere to say bring Frank Gehry in as their architect, that that would qualify for some height and density bonus. We used that when our DSP was first adopted. It proved very difficult to implement, so we proposed just striking that altogether, along with sustainable design for LEED Silver-rated buildings. The LEED system is a rating system sort of ranked similar to the Olympics for green building performance. LEED Silver is one rating point, but it, it's very similar to what's currently required by the California Green Building Code. So in effect, we're giving developers a bonus for building to the code. So we propose to just cut that out altogether. However, LEED Platinum is the ultimate rating that you can get, and that's still significantly higher than the green building code, so we propose to keep that, but codify actually how that's implemented. The sustainable design feature was added in literally in the day that the hearing the DSP was adopted, so we didn't actually have a set of standards about how those would be implemented. So we propose to codify in the DSP the standards that we've been utilizing through development agreements so far.
Could I ask a quick question, Mayor?
Of course, of course, Ms. Rena.
With LEED Platinum, how hard is it to build to LEED Platinum?
It requires a higher level of commitment to environmental performance.
Right, I realize that. So how many LEED Platinum buildings are there in the, do you know, have any idea how many there are in the greater Los Angeles area?
There's quite a few these days. I know ten years ago, there was only about two.
Right.
But there's quite a few more. And LEED is constantly changing their standards. They have different versions every other year, sort of like software.
How much cost does it add typically?
My understanding is it's somewhere around ten to fifteen percent premium for every time you want to move up the scale.
So it would be from, so there's gold in the middle, so it's twenty, about a twenty percent premium?
Right.
To then build LEED?
Yeah. And actually, the good, the LEED, the LEED Platinum is, would also include LEED Gold, but we could just keep it at Platinum and tell people to go straight for?
Right.
The highest rating.
Ms. Devine?
What is the incentive? You don't mention that. You just say that, or the incentive, what, what, is it density? Is it height? Is it?
It's both, depending on which incentive you use. But in this case, we're talking about LEED Gold or Platinum. It's three stories of additional height and a one-point-five FAR. Most of the downtown is somewhere around a three-point-oh FAR, so it's a pretty significant, relatively significant height and density bonus for the LEED standards. And each one of these is different depending on, they're not all sort of equal to the same incentive. But as I said, sustainable design, we've had two LEED Silver buildings proposed. Nobody's proposed a LEED Platinum building in the downtown yet, so we'd be pushing the envelope if we maintain it. The council had also expressed an interest in looking at the incentives as they relate to parking, parking private vehicles. And we really, the DSP itself does not have any incentives associated with parking. There really has been kind of two incentives associated with parking that have been employed in the downtown specific plan area. One is mandated by the state's affordable housing bonus law, SB eighteen eighteen. And I think there's been a few projects that have utilized that, but that's through SB eighteen eighteen, not through the DSP. The code, zoning code, parking standards as they apply to the downtown specific plan does provide incentives, parking reduction incentives for projects that engage in voluntary transportation demand management that goes beyond what we already require. We haven't seen that thus far. The current code parking standards in the downtown specific plan are relatively new. They were adopted in March of two thousand and eleven after about a one-year discussion with not only our commissions, but also downtown stakeholders, the council, and redevelopment agency. We've seen before the two thousand and eleven code, it seemed that almost every project was requesting some form of parking exception or parking reduction. Since two thousand and eleven, most of the very large projects have built to the code and in some cases provided a few parking spaces over. So we think those parking standards are kind of right-sized to where the market would go. And since there was extensive discussion on that a few years ago, staff is not proposing any changes to the parking standards downtown.
Are you worried about the voluntary transportation demand management? What does that even mean? What do, what do they have to do?
It depends on how much they're requesting. There is an incentive, if they provide over the required amount of bike parking, that they can get a few, some parking breaks. It also is if they, say it's a residential project, if they provide free bus passes or some form of bus passes to residents beyond what they're required to, they can begin to sort of get various deductions in their parking requirements. The way that system works is it's based on points. So additional bike parking may get you one point. In order to get the full, in order to get any deduction, you may need to accumulate up to five points. So it's a kind of point system. And as I said, we haven't seen any developer go to that extra distance or even explore that possibility yet. We do require, as part of the two thousand and eleven code requirements, we did require large projects, whether they're commercial or residential or mixed use, to join the Transportation Management Association, which is now known as Go Glendale. That's relatively new. That didn't exist before two thousand and eleven. And as these buildings are coming online, they are joining that organization. So there is additional transportation demand management measures in the downtown that don't apply elsewhere in the city already. There is also a number of kind of other, what we might call sort of relatively minor cleanups, adjusting some of the maps to reflect, like I said, the current bike plan, the downtown business association, some kind of clarification language that we'd recommend, that is outlined in the staff report, that we'd recommend doing in addition to this, but not substantive policy changes. So that concludes our kind of overview of this. As I said, we're requesting that you initiate these amendments this evening, should you do so. We think we could be in front of the Planning Commission with a strike-through version for their input in March, probably their second meeting in March, not the first one.
If, if we adopted it tonight, they, they wouldn't be in effect until they go through Planning Commission?
Correct. It would have to go to the Planning Commission for a formal recommendation and then come back to you.
Yes, Mr. Najarian?
Okay, just some comments. I'm, I was one of the ones who requested that this come back. I requested that it come back because it was apparent that we were getting buildings that were more dense and that were higher and that were taking advantage of some of these incentives that perhaps were not foreseen when we were discussing the downtown specific plan six, seven years ago. So, that being said, I would like to comment on those changes. And for the most part, I am in agreement with staff. I think we need to prevent the double dip on the SB eighteen eighteen bonus when it's combined with any other bonus, as you've recommended. I am not in favor of giving a double square footage bonus to the developer that wants to put an art use in the building. I think there's another way, if that's our goal, is to bring art to the downtown area, there's another way of doing that, rather than creating another problem, which is the increased density and the height. We've got a fund, and we've got other incentives that we can work on to make that happen. You know, just look at the Museum of Neon Art that we brought in. We did not, we gave another type of incentive for them, subsidy essentially. As far as the public open space goes, yes, you're right on. The, the public open space that was included in some of those earlier buildings was kind of a joke. It looked like virtually indistinguishable from the private property of the, the developer, and the developer was certainly not in any hurry to let the public know that it was an open space. So all of your, all of your recommendations, I support the signage, the at-grade nature of the public space, the horizontal width limitation, so it's not just a, looks like a long hallway, and the, the open air. There's a discussion of open air nature of that rather than being an overhang. So I, I really think you did a good job on that. And I think this is one area where the developers took us. They read the rules. Our, our consultants and the facilitators that follow council and look at the code certainly took advantage of this and with a very minor, if any, increasing cost to the developer was able to get them a significant bonus and additional money in their pocket and value for their building. So I'm very glad that you're proposing those particular changes. I agree with your signature design elimination because it is so rarely used and difficult to ascertain. The sustainable design, our Title twenty-four, is that the correct name? The, the building code basically brings us to the silver level anyway, so eliminating that is fine. Codifying the LEED Platinum standards is great. You know, the reuse of existing buildings, it's not really, you know, as I said, I don't think it's been used very often. The historic preservation, no. The hotel, you know, hotel, I think is one amenity and one type of use that we are lacking in the downtown. I know there's one being planned, actually, one being built on Colorado, one being planned off of Central. So I support keeping that the same. So basically, the only, you know, the only problem I have is with the art gallery museum, and I'd like to, I'd like to keep that, I'd like to keep that the same. The parking, you know, so the example you said is that we had a parking standard and the developers came in and were complaining that it was too strict and they were seeking variances. And then we lowered the parking requirements and they were happy with it. And I'm not sure that is an equilibrium. So one of my arguments that I made time and time again is that we need to really see and observe the impact that these buildings have on the streets and the parking spaces within our community. We have this idea, this concept, a theory, a parking model that, that the planners use that we only need this many spaces because people will only have one car, or they'll walk to work, or they'll walk to the restaurants, et cetera. I think we need to really see in practice how the parking is being used and if there's any overflow parking before we can lock in an approval, a checkmark next to our current parking, next to our current parking codes. So we really won't know that till... So we really won't know that until we get a building or two that are up to full capacity. And I don't think we're there yet to really have a valid survey of, of the parking in and around a particular structure. So let's leave that one up. Let's not say, oh, we found our equilibrium yet. Let's just, you know, to be determined, if you would, so we can come back to that and pay a little more close attention once we see the true impact. The models might be right. The models might be wrong. So in the end, we want to make sure that anything going forward is at that correct level of parking so we don't have the impact on the communities and the residents. So other than that, I would give you guys a, an A minus for your proposals. And that's good coming from them.
They're smiling.
Very well done, A minus.
Yeah, I'm, I'm very glad to see this come forward. About a month ago, we raised the impact fees to the maximum that we could raise them by law. We're not in the position right now, I think, of trying to incentivize more development. We've had about as much development starting in this community as I think this community can take right now. And so we don't, we're definitely not where we were several years ago where things were just stopped and we were very afraid about having Circuit City standing empty and lots empty and wanted to create an 18-hour downtown where people were living in the downtown for the first time, and we've done that. And we've created a new community in our downtown where before at night it was empty and scary to walk around in and deserted and businesses were closing, and we've done that. And we need to see what the impacts of all of those things are going to be. I agree with Mr. Najarian, actually, about the parking. It would be great to see what effect all of this has. I worry less about the parking for the residents. I worry more about guest parking because I feel like in a lot of these buildings, that's more of what's lacking. Most of those units do have two parking spaces when you average it out. But sometimes these buildings, I'm just not sure where the guest park, if it's, it may be too much, it may not be enough. I don't know. And certainly in the downtown, there are other parking options for people, and I understand that, but we need to really see how all that susses out. So in terms of all of these, I agree about the double dipping absolutely on SB 1818. The art gallery doesn't seem to be working, so I just don't see it, I don't see people clamoring for it, so we might as well just get rid of it rather than increasing the incentive. I also have some worries about what they would consider to be a gallery, what we would consider if they start putting up their own private art collection, throwing some art in the wall and saying, hey, that's my gallery, give me my square footage. I, I could see us running into trouble. And I agree, we have other means for that. Now, I disagree with historic preservation and adaptive reuse because we haven't seen it. So I think we need to take a look at whether we incentivize for buildings that do reach some historic standard to try to keep them standing. We saw that with the building on the corner of San Fernando and where's the one with the sofa gallery? What's, what's the street? Is that Los Feliz? With the link, which is a building that I thought-
Central.
Central, thank you, Central. Where I thought that building should have been maintained and adaptively reused and not torn down. I'd like to see property owners that are in that position have more incentive to keep those properties standing. I don't know if it's possible, but let's take a look at it. Because losing our historic resources, we need to preserve what we have that we like while we're doing all of this rebuilding, or else we're going to have a city that is not recognizable to the people who live here. And we need to maintain some through, some continuity of experience, I think, for the residents. Public open space, here's my question. I agree that a lot of the public open space has been a disappointment. I don't know that it will be in the future. I do believe that some of the newer designs we've seen do a much better job with public open space, so I'm looking forward to seeing those come to fruition. But my question is, if we want our his, public open space to be a certain way and to look a certain way and to have a certain amount of it so that we're incentivizing it, why incentivize it at all? Why not just require it? Can we do that? Or is it, is that just go so far beyond private property rights that we can't even do it legally?
Councilmember Friedman, we do require some public open space already-
I understand that.
But this extensive proportionality to decide the building, at this point, we don't.
Right. I'm saying if we want more, if our goal is that we feel that that proportion could be better, why can't we just make them put more open space in and do all those things? Do the signage, do the hours, because I agree, we need to have that regardless.
I guess what you're asking, if I'm understanding you correctly, is that why not make the public, public open space incentive a, a, a standard?
Right.
If we make it a standard, then the approach that the developers will likely take is much more of a, sometimes suburban approach to developing this land. It might be better to just get rid of the incentive altogether, if that's what you'd like, and then not give any incentive for public open space, but maintain the standard as it is, as an urban standard. Because the standards we have for these buildings are urban standards. And if you wanted to increase that, then you're dealing with a different kind of a physical form.
All right. Well, I'm okay with your modifications. At some point when this comes back, maybe you should, could show me some examples of what you mean by suburban versus urban.
Yeah.
I mean, people have been using it, so clearly it can work, but I think really, really clarifying what we want to have and making that the standard so that it really is usable, really invitable, not just a bigger sidewalk, which is what we've seen in some of them, maybe that would just be enough. I agree about eliminating signature design. Interestingly, Burbank has been going through a debate about signature design and realizing that they didn't have it well-defined, so people maybe had a different idea of what it meant. And they're now trying to define it. Rather than defining it, let's just get rid of it. My goal is that every new building of any scale in our city should be signature design. Let's just not approve them if they're not signature design, instead of giving an incentive for that. That would be, that would be my goal. I agree, let's get rid of LEED silver and jump right to platinum. It adds a 20% premium, which is probably why we haven't seen a lot of it being used. If somebody really wants to go to that extent to build something that's sustainable, that's appropriate. So I think staff did a great job at really going through these. You've now had several years of experience working with them, you know what's working, what's not, and I appreciate you taking the time to do that tweaking and, and really taking a critical look at these codes. And we should continue as we go on. We need to, I, I think every two years, we should probably go through this exercise again, if not every year. So, thank you. And you, you have my comments. They're a little different from Mr. Najarian's, but that's where I am. They're, they're on the same page.
So A minus or what?
No, I think it's, I think it's a solid A. You're always going to have people that have slightly different input and I, I think it's an A.
A minus and A.
Obvious.
Yes, Ms. Devine.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm on the side of require, require, require. So I'm with Councilmember Friedman in saying require open space. I think that, that's absolutely necessity. I think if you have a five thou, you can make your figures. If you have a 5,000, 50,000 square foot building, you have to have 500 square feet or 1,000 square feet of open space. But I definitely agree that that should be. The art usage, I also feel the same way as Councilman Najarian, that there is no, we're here to kind of reduce or eliminate incentives and to double one is, is just kind of disingenuous. So I agree with that to eliminate the, the art galleries and the museums. Public open space, again, no bonus for that, just require it. The sustainable design, let's see, sustain, the LEED, the LEED. Could we do something like require, require the silver and incentivize the platinum?
Essentially, this would result, it would result in that. What we have in the building code is giving us LEED silver level buildings. So essentially, we are creating LEED silver buildings under the new building code. With the additional green codes that this council has adopted as part of our building code, we already meet LEED silver.
But you're incentivizing that, aren't you?
No, we're eliminating the incentive. That incentive was here before the building code was changed.
Okay, so now we're going to require.
Correct.
Require that they do-
Essentially, our building code requires that, yes.
Just to be clear, the code will not require LEED silver because it's a whole process. But Title 24?
Title 24.
The standards are such that anybody, to comply with Title 25, you're meeting or exceeding LEED silver, which is why the proposal is to eliminate the incentive.
The LEED silver point system has nothing to do with the building code. It's a separate kind of a measure that-
Okay.
-we adopted at the time, but since then, the California building code has been changed and it's a lot more green than it was.
Okay.
Just to clarify, LEED silver, LEED platinum, this is administered by the U.S. Green Building Councils, so you have to go through a process of registering with them. And they come out and certify your building after it's finished, and they give you a plaque and a piece of paper and a pat on the back for doing that work. So we're getting LEED silver quality buildings without development community having to go through the process of getting the actual LEED silver plaque.
Okay. I just, I just feel that the incentives, even for the platinum, are just outrageous. I mean, just really, that's, what did you say it was? Again, the incentive for the-
It's for LEED platinum, that's 1.5 FAR, an additional three stories of height.
Three stories.
Correct.
Does anybody disagree with, or agree with me on that, that that's too much?
Well, no one's used it. I mean, so, I don't know.
Since we've had two projects that have utilized the LEED silver standing, I suppose we could look, take a look at those and come back with a proposal on the LEED platinum.
What we can do is that by the time we come back from the planning commission, we can give you some examples of what it might take. Because LEED, LEED platinum is a very high standard to achieve. And in terms of energy savings and other things, it's, it's something that, it's something to look at, but we can present it, and if council is inclined to eliminate it, at that time, you could.
Well, it almost seems to me like if you keep making it bigger and bigger and bigger, what are we, what are we saving? You know what I mean? What are we really accomplishing?
I think there's kind of an inverse proportion, though, in terms of if you make that building bigger and bigger and bigger, having to make sure it meets the platinum standard gets more and more and more and more difficult. And so it's either going to be a, a much smaller building such that it doesn't make sense to build, or it's such a voluminous, huge building that you could never build it in Glendale. So to the extent that you just eliminate it altogether, because it probably, if we haven't seen one in this cycle, you may not see it ever again. So as Mr. Agani says, we, we can, we can bounce it off the planning commission and at, at the time that this would come back, council could just strike it.
Okay. Great. Okay, thank you. And I have a question about the parking. The, the 2011 amendments, did you say that that was a stricter parking code or?
It's, it's a combination of things. Councilmember, I believe it was Councilmember Friedman or Najarian who said, we sort of reduce the parking standards in the downtown, which is generally true, although for residential buildings, they do tend to average out two parking spaces per unit. But it is true that we require less guest parking in the downtown than we do elsewhere in the city. Again, that's under the premise that somebody coming to visit some resident downtown could potentially park in one of the city's garages. However, we also, as I said, require that these large projects become members of the Transportation Management Association and engage in some modest transportation demand management programs.
But don't we require them to have bike racks and bike seats?
Yes.
I mean, that's all a requirement.
That's a requirement, and that's relatively unique to the downtown, the requirement for the bike racks. But if they go beyond that, they can start racking up points that would allow them to reduce parking.
So you don't think it would be a good idea to go back to the 2011, the code before 2011?
If I may, the-
I mean, we haven't seen the impact of the parking, like the other councilman has said.
We haven't.
So why don't we-
The 20, the change that we brought in was a result of several years of discussion. And when you actually create additional parking spaces beyond what's demanded, you are essentially creating additional trips on the streets. So one, the, the two are connected. It's a larger, and then we went through several years of discussion and one year of community meetings on that, the whole issue of what should we do? Should we keep requiring additional parking where people come and apply for exceptions and they prove to us that they don't have the parking demand? And we give them, you know, one after another. I'm not, at this point, after we went through that practice, maybe it is a good, a good thing to just wait and see a couple of the buildings come up and we can do counts out there and to see if they fit our models. And if they don't, then we can come propose to change the parking back to what it used to be.
Okay, okay. That I can believe. And I have a question on the hotel historic preservation and reuse. I didn't see the incentives. What, what are the incentives there?
I believe, well, in a hotel, you can maximize the envelope. So if the maximum envelope, including incentives, is six stories or 12 stories, somebody comes in the hotel, they get with just that incentive up to that maximum. So for example, the higher regency, or not the higher regency, I wish it was a higher regency, but I believe it's going to be a higher place at the corner of Wilson and Central. That's an 11 or 12-story building. That's the maximum they could go in that area. And they got there because they brought in the hotel. And other places, as I said, the maximum you could build is six stories, even with all the incentives. I believe the historic preservation also allows you to go to the max incentive, and then adaptive reuse is sort of halfway in between, but I'll get the exact number.
So we might be looking at that one again? That's the one the council-
Well, we're not proposing to change that. Just so you know, the hotel incentive was created part of the downtown specific plan hearings as a way of boosting economic development. Because hotels, not only do they bring hotel taxes, they also bring consumers for our goods. So that was really, and again, it's a policy for the council to, to consider. We could, we could change that, but really, there is no, no magic to it. We can break it in the end.
No, I was actually asking about the historic preservation, yeah.
Right. Historic preservation would also allow you go to the maximum height permitted under that district.
And was that one that Councilmember Friedman asked to, that you would be looking at again?
Well, we can't really make it go any more than it is. It already gives you the maximum. The adaptive reuse allows you two stories of additional height and a 1.0 FAR.
What about parking with the adaptive reuse and historic preservation? Do you give parking exceptions for those older buildings that don't have parking, that want to change use?
If we have a historic building that's listed, they already, our zoning code already gives them all of those, no matter where they are in the city, they get parking exceptions because they're historic.
Yeah. And as I said, we have not seen anyone use either the adaptive reuse or the historic preservation incentive to date.
Well, that's my issue. Maybe we need to find ways, if there are, we could think about it more, about other incentives to try to keep some of the signature buildings standing, even if, you know, and there's also, I'm sorry, Ms. Devine, do you mind if I?
That's, no, you're good. Thank you.
It's one thing when a building's to the level of being able to be listed, but there's also buildings that are character-defining that may not rise to that level but still have value. And if we can also figure, you know, think about, do those qualify for the adaptive reuse?
We have those as the reuse of existing buildings. That's the retrofitting of existing buildings is different than adaptive reuse. Adaptive reuse is a higher, a higher incentive.
It concerns me because I feel that we've lost some buildings that were worth keeping. So if there are ways of coming up with incentives to help keep some of those buildings, that would be my goal. And maybe there's not. Maybe just the market is so powerful and these buildings are so small and generate so little income that there's nothing you can come up with that would keep them standing, but it's just something to think about.
Well, to your, to your previous point of, of this being a living document and having additional reviews of this, to the extent that we're doing the commercial survey of historic buildings, once that is completed later this calendar year, we hope, that might be the time to bring back this particular incentive to see if you would adjust it up, adjust it down, or eliminate it altogether.
Just so you know, the way that the adaptive reuse, the historic preservation incentive would work is, for example, if you have a piece of property, a corner of which there is an existing building like Glenfed, that would otherwise be allowed to go up to 25 stories, but we are asking to maintain that, the rest of the property can be built up to the maximum level for, in exchange for maintaining the, the building. And in the end, it's, it's a matter that goes before the city council for review and to see if the trade-off is worth it. That's really the way it would work. There aren't very many sites like that, that there's a lot of room to develop around an existing building on the same property. So that's probably why it hasn't been used, but we will revisit it.
Well, I mean, let me ask you this. So for adaptive reuse, do we ever give breaks on building permits for adaptive reuse rather than redevelopment, things like that? Or do we do that with historic structures?
Historic, once, again, once an applicant actually decides to go and register a building and, and, and list it, then we can invoke the, the historic building code that has several ways to give an incentive to the builders to maintain the existing buildings without having to change all the structure to today's code. So there's a lot of savings for them there. In addition to that, the exchange, the change of use in those buildings-
Right, I understand that.
-we have a lot of provisions and we have parking. So there are a lot of economic benefits to people if they list them and if they agree to, to maintaining certain historic features and, and, and character-defining features.
Maybe it's just a, it's something that maybe, is it something you can bring to the Historic Preservation Commission later and see if they can come up with anything that we can afford to do that would help with at least the historic buildings? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Weaver. Well, I worked on the downtown specific plan for a decade. A lot of effort went into it. And as I've said many times, any ordinance can be changed. We can tinker with it all the time. This case, we're tinkering now, and, and I think we should look at it every so often based on what we see occurring out there. Could you go back one slide a second? I want to look at the numbers. Go back and, uh, public open space, 12 projects took. That's the main one. Well, yeah, now you can go back. But 12 projects were concentrated on getting the bonus for open space. Personally, I think, I thought privately, the open space I've seen in every single project in this town that we've been developing downtown is a- in this town that we've been developing downtown is a joke. If you want to have public open space, it's got to be more than a postage stamp, and it can't be hidden away. You talk about half of it being open to the sky. Most people, and the ones we have approved, are not gonna go walking into those private, those public open spaces. One, they don't know what it is, two, it's too small, it's in the wrong location. You have to go back and look at the design of the structure that you're putting in to create that open space. So I support that, that change, however that should be. I like everything I see up there. Let's see. Clarify, SBE 1818, yes. Art galleries, museums. I'm not into that. I'm sorry. We have other ways to do it. Hotel and historic preservation, let's see. Historic preservation. Having lived here over 75 years, having shopped on Brand Boulevard, which was the only shopping district in the city back in the 1940s, I have a pretty good idea of what is historic on that street. I don't care what anybody says. I lived it. I shopped it. I know it. So I have problems. What is historic left there? I can tell you, if we're gonna do anything to revitalize Brand Boulevard in the future, there's gonna be no development coming in there that is gonna be willing to open a new store on 50-foot frontage buildings. They're gonna need more than 50. And for ones to have, that have had septic tanks in the back from the past, buildings that do not have any seismic values, they all have to be retrofitted, both in sewers, storm drains, insulation, you name it. If you want an example, look at what Portal's Bakery did. When they added that building to the south of them, they spent millions of dollars just getting it up to code. So 50-foot frontages may be historic, but I think I know my city. As I've said on that, opens, I've said on open space. Yeah, the signature design, that was me. I said at the time, I remember. I wanted signature buildings, so if you saw a picture of it anywhere in Southern California, you would know. That's Glendale, California. But what I am seeing today, in Glendale, in Burbank, in Pasadena, downtown Los Angeles, the west side, everything, is the kind of modern architecture we're seeing today. There's nothing spectacular about it until you, unless you get to some of the major buildings that are being built downtown or whatever, 70 stories high, all this, the best architecture in the world that the normal developer in areas like Glendale, Burbank, Pasadena can't afford. You're not gonna see the signature architecture. All we can do is, the best we can is create architecture that looks good, but it's not gonna be signature. Yeah, sustainable design, eliminate, yeah, whatever we can do to upgrade the sustainable design at the platinum level, whatever can be done on that, fine. Parking? When we started building a few years ago, forgetting when it was, '05, '06, somewhere around there, we started building a couple apartment complexes down by the railroad station. And the first one was built, I remember going down there for dedication, and I went down into the garage, a monster garage, empty. I think there was one or two cars in it. And my gosh. We required this, two levels down and empty? And the developers said, oh, that's the city standards. And we modified that in some areas, and I was all for it because the people, at least personally, I think are gonna live in, a lot of those units are gonna be retired people, husband and wife, retired, don't like to do the maintenance and upkeep on the house. They'll get rid of that, and they'll live in an apartment or condo complex that has all the amenities they could possibly want in their later years. And they'll probably have one car. The other end of the spectrum is new families, single person, or a husband and wife, or as we see today, a lot of individuals living in the same unit because of the cost of housing in the region. And they may have only one or two car. So we lessened our standards because of who most likely would use the apartments. Now, if we've underestimated, that is something we will only discover by seeing what happens with the ones that are open, that'll be opening. Did we do right or wrong? I do know, a few weeks ago, we talked about Lexington, Lexicon Street, between Central and a block west. At that time, there was a complaint that a restaurant called Finesse was using, taking up all the parking. And I went and did a survey of all the parking modifications this city has made since the 1920s up until today. What are our parking requirements today as compared to them? Remarkably, I found out that if we had had the parking standards of today then, would have been 400% more increase in parking requirements. None of those apartment buildings that were built back in those days could be built today. They'd be digging and putting parking structures underneath. So it's a, it's a moving target. That's why I say we have to look at it every couple of years or so to find out what is happening with the parking. Do we have enough or not? Do we need more guest parking? I don't know. I don't think anybody knows. It's a guessing game, based on the best information we can gather, that the staff comes in with, and we'll have to figure it out. For the most part, I think it was worth coming back. See how, when did we approve this? 2006 or '08?
November 2006.
November 2006. So we haven't looked at this for eight years, almost nine years. So it's, it's long overdue. It's like some of our fee structures that we haven't touched for decades. So, yeah, I think we better, as staff sees the need, get back to us to see what we need to do to tighten up or adjust or whatever. All these standards are moving targets. And I know we can do better. We, we did our best guess at the time we put this plan together. Let's see what the future brings. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. I have a question, Mr. Loomis, so that I and our viewers, those president and chairman, understand this clearly. The double dipping for SBE 1818. First of all, the incentive for housing that a developer can get through SBE 1818, is that more or less than the, our own incentive under DSP?
The DSP incentive and SBE 1818 were designed to be fairly parallel in the amount that they would, additional bonus that they would generate. But the DSP incentive was intended to be a little bit easier to actually implement. And so that's why we've seen both. But it also depends, SBE 1818, as you may know, is a sliding scale that grants greater bonus with the more affordable units become.
Okay.
I think SBE 1818 is more generous in terms of the concessions than, than our own downtown specific plan. The concessions that SBE 1818 calls for, could be called by the developer, this downtown specific plan incentive actually defines very specifically what those are.
Right. Which is like housing and the-
Which is housing, and then what they get in terms, it's just FAR and, and additional stories. Whereas SBE 1818 gets into all sorts of things, including parking and other things too.
But SBE 1818 is-
Is a bit more generous and more flexible for developers than ours.
Right. And if you want, if you want some kind of a housing incentive, you can't choose the DSP one over the SBE 1818, or can you?
You can. You can. And then, and just so you know, we, we came up with the housing incentive before SBE 1818, and just after we adopted it, SBE 1818 came up. We still think our own incentive is a little bit more, more, better defined, if you will, than, than SBE 1818.
Right. And those two have never been used parallel, I mean simultaneously?
Together.
Together, no.
We have never allowed it.
Except that SBE 1818 is being used parallel with other incentive, other city incentives.
Correct. For example, sustainable design or open space, use that.
Right.
Get significant bonus off of that, then ask for concessions through SBE 1818.
So when we say double dipping, we're literally talking about doing the same amount of extra work to get two things as opposed to just one. So not only do they get the parking, but they get the height, and that's how they play the system.
But also, they can, they can take advantage of SBE 1818 and then the open space incentive at the same time.
Yeah, or actually the other way around, Dave. Use the open space as the first incentive to create the maximum level residential density, which is the term of art under SBE 1818, and then put the SBE 1818 bonus on top of that.
Yeah. And in this case, what we're saying is that if you use SBE 1818, all the other incentives are off the table for you.
Okay. So they're using, hypothetically speaking, they're using SBE 1818 by providing some extra low-income housing in the, in the, in the building, and instead, they're getting, under the SBE 1818-
At least two concessions.
From the city, they're getting, let's say, height concessions, and they're turning around saying, oh, but under SBE 1818, I can also get parking.
Or even additional height or-
In addition, so, and under SBE 1818, they definitely get the parking because the parking formula changes automatically. So they automatically get that. In addition to that, they tend to usually get height and density, height and FAR. So they get three. And once they add, say, open space incentive, then they get more on top of that.
Right.
This proposal would eliminate that last piece.
Right. But they're, they're not doing twice, they're not providing twice the benefit to the city.
No, in terms of affordable housing?
Okay. So there's really no, I don't see under those circumstances any reason for us not to, not to eliminate this double dipping. So I definitely agree with that.
And-
In gen, yes.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, just to clarify, we'd keep both options on the table. They could either use the DSP affordable as housing incentive or 1818.
Right. But it's one or the other as opposed to one and the other.
And then they wouldn't be able to use the SBE 1818 with any of the other incentives?
Right. Right.
Combine the affordable housing incentive in the downtown specific plan with other incentives, but they will not be able to do so with SBE 1818, under the proposed plan.
Okay. So under the down, so they can combine incentives under downtown specific plan, but not with SBE 1818? Very good. I agree that there's, I mean, I don't see the reason to increase incentives for art galleries and museums for the reasons that were stated by my colleagues. No change with hotels, no change for historic preservation for the same reasons. Same with reuse of existing buildings. Public open space, I also agree that often you're mystified as to what, how that open space can, in good faith, be defined as public. So let's ratchet that up as recommended. Agree with the sustainable design, platinum, keeping that, and then eliminating the silver, and the parking also staying unchanged. So basically with the, it sounds like my position coincides with our Najarians, council Najarians. And I don't want to belabor the point anymore. Yes?
I just want to make a clarification. I, I have heard two different things regarding the art galleries. One was to scrap the existing, even the existing incentive, I heard that. And I also heard another comment that do not double the incentive. So I would just like to get clarification on which direction.
Keep it or eliminate it altogether?
Right.
Keep it as is or eliminate it altogether?
Eliminate, that's right. That's about it. So how do we both-
Just give direction.
It's just a motion, it's just a motion to provide direction in accordance with the staff recommendations and in alliance with the council's comments here tonight.
I'm moved with that.
Second.
Okay. So, so on, okay. So we have on the record what the council's recommendations are?
Yes, sir.
Do, if you'd like, Mr. Agani to-
Because I have a couple of versions of them.
Do you want to walk through each one, then?
Yeah. Because there were-
Shall we? Yeah, absolutely. There is consent on the double dipping and clarifying the use of SBE 1818. Consent is to completely eliminate the art gallery incentive.
I think there was one dissenting voice, but otherwise, yes.
Hotel, consent to maintain it the way it is. On historic preservation or the reuse of existing building, generally consent to maintain it as is. Although council member Friedman would like to reevaluate that incentive, perhaps in collaboration with the Arts Commission, I think maybe at a later date as the commercial corridor survey is completed.
Not the Arts Commission, the historic preservation.
The historic preservation commission. Mike, thank you for the correction. Unanimity on the open, clarifying the open space incentive, and we will take a close look at what poss, what the standards are, and be very clear on that when we come to planning commission and come back to you. Eliminating signature design and lead silver, consent on that. And maintaining lead platinum, is consent on that with the council member Devine suggesting that perhaps we are giving too much, so we can take another look at that. And then as regards to parking, it seemed there was consent that we could keep it as is for the time being, but as we get more empirical data, we should probably take a second look at those parking standards to ensure we're not generating a, a future problem.
Right. Very well.
So this will go to the planning commission with our recommendation?
It'll go to the planning commission with your direction.
As expressed by the council of the planning commission.
It's a very strong recommendation from, but they make a recommendation to you, not the other way around.
Yes.
Well, we just told them.
So as I said, we'd, we'd hope to be in front of the planning commission in March, and then back to you as quickly as possible.
I'll make the motion.
We have a second.
May we have the roll call, please? Council members, Devine?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Yarsonani?
Yes. Thank you. What's next on the agenda?
Next item on the agenda is oral communication. Discussion is limited to items not part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or, may question or respond to speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. C M manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and a report.
Very well. Thank you. First speaker is Henry Ivanyan, followed by Rima Hakopian. You have five minutes. Please state your name for the record.
My name is Henry Ivanyan, and resident Glendale since 1978. Sometimes, certain businesses in certain residential dynamics. Two years ago, next to my house, a dance studio moved in. And I don't know why the law doesn't require like a certain, to follow certain procedure. For example, a padded wall, soundproof, when those doors closed. I asked neighborhood services, they said it falls under the category of like karate or dojo. But the dojo doesn't have speakers. And back of their building, recently, they started doing like a strength training for mixed martial artists. And I complained to the neighborhood services, Renee talked to them, I forget his last name, from neighborhood services. They stopped that. But to retaliate, they raised the volume when the zumba classes is there. So I'm asking, is there any middle ground? We could-
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Ivanyan. Did I not ask staff to, I believe I got a response to look into this issue?
Do we have the address on the staff?
Give it to us.
Yeah.
But we have an amplified sound ordinance, right? They would have to have a special-
The noise ordinance, and the noise ordinance actually leveled.
Are you sure you guys dealt with this issue? I thought- What was the address, though, sir? Yeah, what's the address?
Is it, my address?
Tell us, you don't have to tell us on camera.
It's 1812.
Mine is 1812. It's back, it's, I think, 2836 Verdugo, because it falls on Verdugo.
Staff can check it out.
We'll have, check it out. I, I'm quite sure there was an email from Mr. Ivanyan, which I passed on to-
You were very gracious enough to return my email.
So I know there's a response or something was being done, so let's work.
We'll, we'll-
You need his, you need his phone number?
We have his, we have his address.
Back him down.
Okay.
If you can give us-
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ivanyan. Rima Hakopian, followed by Dan Margon.
Good evening, mayor.
Evening.
Council members.
Councilmembers. May I ask for, I have two separate issues. May I be granted a few extra minutes to address?
How much time will you need?
Well, they're two separate issues, so maybe the five minute will be sufficient for the first and maybe another three, four for the second, I don't know.
Mr. Garcia, I'm inclined to give her the time unless you tell me there's something under the code forbidding me.
It's your discretion. I mean, obviously you'd have to give equal time to anybody else who had a similar issue, but given this...
Sure. The only other speaker is Don Margolin, I'll give him the extra time if he needs it also. So how much time did you say you will need total?
Max 10. Eight?
Eight minutes, that's two.
Thank you. So the first item on my list is, last year, we were granted a 90-day trial for the west parking situation, the two-hour parking. It was changed to 6:00 to 10:00 p.m. with a 90-day trial, and we're approaching the 90-day. And council had said that if it doesn't work out, then come back and we'll make those changes. We're back. It's not working. I personally have parked my car out on the street many times for six, seven, eight, 10 hours at a time, taking a risk for a citation. Doesn't happen. In fact, just today, I've taken photos of four or five different vehicles that were parked, two across the street from my home, two on the same side as my home, for hours at a time. It's not working for us, Mayor Sinani. We're asking to go back to what we were proposing, which is permitted parking. Also, we noticed a few days ago that one of the signs were taken down across from the Fenicia banquet hall. Why? We don't know. So really, there's no sign people can park there all day, on that section of the block. But as to the rest, the signs are up, but no parking enforcement, because we know parking enforcement is not there after 7:00. And as we've discussed, we don't want to be a policeman standing on the street, calling the police after an hour or two coming, the police showing up, then they have to mark it for another two. It's just, it isn't going to work. So we're asking, please, make the change. Allow the residents of the 300 block to have peace, to, to come home without any aggravation. So I'm done on the first.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for that. The second issue, first of all, I'd like to thank Councilwoman Friedman for all the work that you put into the environmental and helping our planet, our country, to become a good, clean environment to live. Unfortunately, the issue here with Fenicia Restaurant/Banquet Hall, hosing down the property when there is dirt, grease, hosing down a property to the curb side that trickles down all the way to front of my home, as everyone washes down their property, we have water, horrible odor trickling down. Huge issue. We have taken video clips of it, shown to the city staff. They've promised that they're going to take care of the situation. It hasn't happened. Second, thank you for, Councilwoman Weaver, for reminding us that decades ago when they built the blocks, the properties on our block, didn't have sufficient parking, but those buildings were legal and they were allowed, and they're there, and they're going to stay there. But the question is, how does a banquet hall get built, a 300, 400-person banquet hall, without any addition parking? That's the problem in this era a year ago. The man added 400 people place for banquets. By the way, playing with words doesn't work anymore. It took us a year to figure out, he's not allowed to have amplified music or live music or DJ in that place. He's allowed for the first section, the original section of the room, but not the addition. So therefore, we insist, we want to be insured that he calls it sitting area, outdoor sitting area, in order for him to avoid having parking on site. But yet he wants to run it as a banquet hall, which is not going to happen. So we asked the city, we don't care who he knows, what he does, or who he knows. We asked the council to please help the city to become a better place to live, ask the staff to honor the laws and the rules of the city, no bending. We don't mind a little bending if it's not going to affect anyone, if it's not going to harm anyone. We have nothing against anyone, but not on the, on the sake of the residents when they don't have peace. There's disturbance, and when we call the cops. By the way, we also had a conference call with Hassan Hagani, Chief Castro, and Dan Bell. They did acknowledge that he does not have permit to run music, amplified music, or live music, but yet he does, and no one does anything about it. So please help us to take care of that situation as well. I'm done. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Devine?
I, I want to say that, you know, I've been walking around the city lately, and I was met by a postman who has a sister that lives on Lexington, and he was very upset because he said he can never find parking. And I said, but we changed, and he said, nothing has changed. So I, when is the 90 days up?
Coming up, I believe, in, in the next week. We're finishing up the analysis this week, I believe, Rubik, and then next week we would hopefully be generating a report. So while I appreciate Ms. Hakopian's comments, they're just maybe a little bit early in terms of bringing information to council?
So why don't we hold tight and look at the report, and Ms. Hakopian, you'll have the opportunity to obviously come in, weigh in.
And what about the music and all that?
To my knowledge, we are following up on complaints. I believe over the last 90 days, we've had a handful of complaints to PD regarding loud music, one incident, and we have had parking enforcement, although I don't believe we've gotten any calls on the parking enforcement. So all of that will be detailed for you in the 90-day report.
We haven't been calling parking enforcement. No need to. We've tested it. We've parked our cars out there for hours at a time. That's the best way to prove that there's no parking enforcement.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Hakopian.
Thank you.
We'll see you...
Next week?
Yeah. Well, I don't know about next week, but whenever, whenever we're ready. So, thank you. Don Margolin, how much time do you need?
Three minutes. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. This is a review, because I've done this before. Going to the bottom of my list, at Redondo Beach, as I said before, it's free. Beverly Hills is free. El Segundo is 101 for unlimited rack, so if we had 10, for example, it'll be $10 apiece. And if you go up to Torrance, it's 20, 220 for the business license, so it'd be $22 for a rack if we had 10 racks. Now, when you look at the, the costs, Glendale is the second highest. The only one higher is Santa Monica. And what's been said in the past is, all the other cities are asleep, and they're not paying attention to what the racks are costing them. It's hard to believe that 13 cities near here are not paying attention at all. It's been said, but is it really always the truth? So what I'm asking is, if it's put on the agenda, and maybe we're given more time, because we're not budgeted to go from $52 to $241 in one year, the papers don't have the money, and it's a big problem for us. So I was hoping, maybe we could have another year, maybe we could have a 20% of the $52, maybe we could have 30%, but going up 400% is just, where's the money going to come from? So if it can be on the budget and you can vote on it, then maybe we could get more time or whatever the council decides. I'd appreciate it.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Margolin. I believe we addressed this last week, and we're revisiting the fee in its entirety.
Next week's mid-year budget review.
There you go. Next week's budget review.
Will I come back next week, or?
You, you can come back, not come back. We will be dealing with this issue next week. So this is being dealt with.
Okay.
We, we've heard you, and we're going to consider it, and we're going to have a report on it, all that.
So I'll come back and listen.
Sure. Come back, listen, you can speak on the issue if you want.
Thank you very much for your consideration.
Mr. Margolin, next item, please.
Mr. Mayor and Council, new business.
We do have new business.
Yes. I'd like to move that the city attorney be and hereby is authorized to initiate a legal proceedings in Superior Court in order to recover workers' compensation benefits incurred as an accidents, in an accident involving a city employee and a third party. The name of the proceedings, the defendants, and the nature of the action shall be disclosed to any person upon inquiry once the action has commenced. The city attorney is authorized, further authorized to incur any and all expenses necessary in connection with said matter.
Do we have a second?
Roll call, please. Councilmembers Devine?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Mayor Sinani?
Yes, thank you.
Next item?
Will we adjourn?
Second? And we're adjourned at 7:43 p.m.